Tumela. Eh, ma. Oh. I just say, if we call it that, come on. I will see. He is what. Yeah.
Tumela, bom melibontate. Bom melibontate tumela. O. Oos. Tumela. Kya wanale tawo rapé. Eh. Kya utwisi sa owa Afrika Boror na ldu melotanga. Eneka ofele mlaote waruna wadi lompa. Kika ho haruli mani parliamenting hanga darikirinka zila yatape. Read zantweni wizwa moment of silence. Iwe muthemule munguibela katumelu ya. Eh. En kya tseba hori. Eh, it's highly debatable. Eh, and it's a very emotional issue. Eh, ninety percent yabatwa South Africa are Christian. Eh, loosely, we use it as a Christian country. Eh, in many other countries, there's one religion. And everywhere else, without question, that religion gets practiced. And it's treated as a dominant religion, therefore the country follows that. Now I know it's an emotional issue because religion is not a simple thing. And in your case, South Africa, it's more complex. But our constitution therefore allows and give respect to all religions and treat them as equal. Eh. And that's why we don't give any religion over the other. The truth is, no one of us here can say I was not brought up in a Christian family and later on chose to be something else. So generally, we are a Christian country. And if you take everything else, if you are brought up in the Christian values and norms, you are brought up under the same values and norms of Ubuntu, Butoh. So, so I'm not gonna go to those politics, I'm just going to be a member of parliament and say, can we stand up and observe a moment of silence? Bon tate, please take off your hats and bow your head and then pray to the God you pray to. Thank you. Maybe sit there. Kitembeni schooling wa ingisa, member of parliament in the first state legislature, chairperson of this committee. And so I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves. I'll do it. I know I work with them all the time. But the difficulty I'm having is that we might start this session and finish without them speaking and you'll miss out on the beautiful voices they have. So at least if they introduce themselves and they happen not to say anything, you will remember that beautiful voice. Can I do that, starting with you?
Thank you, Chairperson. Yes, indeed, we are a complex country, eh? So it's a very complex country and to make things even more complex, even in Christianity, there are so many denominations, denominations that we sometimes see them fight amongst themselves, but ultimately we believe we're there in one body in Christ. Be that as it may, my name is Armand Kluta, tumelang, uh, hue mora, uh, good day, and I'm a member of the committee. Thank you.
Tumelanga. Eh, ba iso, na ki me saraboneleki. A member of a committee in a mani legislature. Itli mkuwa mkialewa.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Naga libizo kelethloho nolo James liduka. Kese to sa ketza mlao yanu loya freestyle ta. Na zilena kimurumua uanu kuyo yakeza mlao. Kialewa wari miala ntlewa tva iso.
Renale bato batwa ngu parliamenting ngudi mukwana. Eh, pata itibisa na kwe seba buwa. Eh, sodatre uduwe mla itawo runawa zatilena. En jala kaunutali situe Eliyon. Aketa ubua sbusiso. Le tava le mu nyekao re le bo ipoto. Lebele peiseka olaisa ma ikutwalo. Udu melitu ubua kapu uya how, ntsama ikutwa how.
This is your parliament. This is people's parliament. We are just members representing you in accordance to your votes, but this is your parliament. We are nothing without you. So you have a right to express or speak. Eh, so you are free to say whatever you wanna say eh, in whatever way you wanna say, as long as you sa rwaaki. Eh, maro umbuama ikutwa how, olaisa dinhlata how. Eh. Yes, onarawu klute, we have a beautiful country. Just mwa ba. Let's celebrate twenty-nine years here of democracy in South Africa. It's a beautiful country. Many other countries, people in those countries are killing each other because of religion. Many other countries, people in those countries are killing each other because of ethnicity. Or we now umso utu, umso lumui. We have many in South Africa. But we don't fight on the basis already which ethnic group you carry. We have a beautiful country. So we are here today. We have invited you to participate and input. Lekonsama ikuto, kamila wana emibidi. Eh. Jaleha wetwa mla okara Afrika Bor. Pele mla o, ukena tsebito unkapo udu meloa hori, iwe mla o peta itse. Wita dikopa note chena. Ore loona, bato ba Afrika Bor, abeba, parliament, abeba mla. Libuwe hora mla, ona ora locate chena, kapwa waro locate la chena. Au fetulemona, au fetuleman, iwe rona harifika mani parliamente repiti saseulisubuile. So kika rolo iwiya tsebito ya parliamente. Wa, hantleni parliamente jala kikilisitse kialo. Jale, lefapalena la art and culture. Li karabella nka hori, li hokahane the artist, kamifutiya tso na kahara Afrika Bor. Li karabella nka hori, li etse bunekeba hori, mositwalo na ilu wita. Kati alente taluna le tsebewaluna le bukhuni balo. Li etse hori, likopa yes tchapa, rebes tchapa silesi. Kaoba hantleni rebatwa leba. Pe lasfatsel samudimu rebatwa kaofela ratwa. Kika ho madiaru na makubiduka ofela, ona anali madia blue. Rehemamoya otwa na ngaufela, leo kabwa liko wa, waba muthemu tu, waba likalati, kapwa waba twa angapaswa. Rehemamoya otwa na, ona moyawa bato wating, awa wating, ratwa kaofe, same way. So, hantleni ra twaana. Katata baruna kuri, ri, rela tle iswa ki maso ona. Iwe recebi nisantwe uke thula. Mara hantleni le pe lasfatsel samudimu katwa. So lefapale li, lika hookopa nantwebe wizwa social cohesion, uhotaleza hori, sichapa silesi. We are South Africans and we must take pride about South Africa and be patrons to South Africa. So, loona, mkarolo iwiya fapala sichabi, influencelena liyonasichabi. Lefapalena le coordinator hori, talent, must enhance social transformation, social cohesion. Le na le miseteti eliyeza nka talente taluna kati boyalo. Lefapale le twa nte, ulehotaleza kapwa ulechoriyeza ulefili le di dreams talo. In the process, li etse chelade, in the process, li peace. Kimsebitwa lo na. Obona hori, eh, sitosa sia lompuwa, sitosa runa, sinkelo tu, men sia prison. Kimsebitwa lo. Remember, any nation that does not have a culture is a lost nation. Now, culture is the essence of the nation. It's a makeup of the nation. It's a foundation, originality of the nation. It's economic power of the nation. Because your economy is based on culture and it influences other factors of life. So, this department, lefapale, coordinates that economic aspect of what you do. So that you become best in exploring your talent, but at the same time, your wealth is increasing. It's the job of this department. But most importantly, that kind of work you are doing, of social cohesion, of creating wealth for yourselves, of influencing the nation and changing certain behaviors in the nation, because you are in your own right. People look up to you. And they want to assimilate you, they want to emulate you. Ona leba anaba duti, haduzila penga sheba, eh, wazwa katsalilim kibata otwa na. So you are exemplar to the nation. But in the ultimate end, we expect you, and this department must coordinate, nation building. You must build one nation, one country, South Africa. Now, ona le melawa emibidi, er kilinga ona mona, ekotusa oru na eh, uonali buwe oru na le batalu, uchi tuekae, uchi tuein, latuse, alatuse, in that this position will present. After his presentation, then you will engage. Mla wana o ubuanka.
so that as we see the work being performed, they are also reaping the benefits for the royalties that will be produced in that time without necessarily having to die very poor. Because we've seen lots of artists, they die very poor and we have to assist, especially performers in this regard, to come in and assist them financially. So in this sense, we will ensure that you do have a steady income as you are creative in this particular space and whenever the work that you've been involved in is being produced. Also, they build, they push for, especially the performers to operate within a space that's very formalized, that it encourages performers to actually formalize themselves through structures so that those structures can actually be recognized by the relevant authorities. You were saying that during Covid, it was hard to assist people that are within this space because of lack of formalization and being organized within the creative space. So it's very important that with these spaces as we go forward, that we encourage the industry to actually ensure that they are formalized and organized within their space so that they can also reap the benefits where it's necessary and also to ensure that they operate within a space that is organized for their own good as well and also to reap the benefits that are there. So with these particular things, we are trying to ensure that we promote science, we promote innovation and we ensure that as creatives, we are protected within our own rights so that you can reap the benefits of your works going forward. So the bills currently are before legislature have alluded to and they are here for you to make input on them so that we ensure that where we have to tweak or where we have to consider other issues, they can be considered before the bills are actually passed into law. You will understand that the journey has been long because of the competing interests within the industry and also the challenges we've been facing. So I would urge you, please do make your input so we can consider it before the president can sign off the bill. Other issues of the bill in terms of how we are going to do some of the issues that have alluded to today will be explained extensively when we do the regulations going forward once the bills have been passed into law. And we'll also during that time, we'll go out as well and come to the communities and also the affected persons to present those regulations so that you can still make input as they will talk to issues that will concern you like the rates I've talked about, the contracts, how they look and also how we will go about creating the connecting societies. The chairperson, I think I will end there for today and I will take input from the floor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Posseso. and then ask questions and input. I forgot to explain. Unale intutsetekina kanditebe, how so utwi po? Unale batwa translator. If ubuwa kapu is accurate. So if you need them, just raise your hand, then you will be assistant. Please. So we can have you raising your hands. I'm going to start here and then take hands and then I'll go to this side after. Anyone who wants to speak, you raise your hands. And as you have made your point, but section 12 must be reviewed with immediate effect until research has been conducted. You have unequivocally expressed that view. Because I heard those people who represent is careful around that issue as well. Because you've made your point and I'm sure members of parliament as well are conversant with what you are raising. But thank you very much though. I'm not sure if you want to speak, you will indicate. But I was seeing a hand, one. Kiklo kupa lefa di nomo. Kira akiru one, skar no, dimanuaritela, urukitadi, one, two, three. Just that I don't have time to write your names down, but I just going to allocate numbers to you and please accept that number. So can you raise your hands? Skavale mta futumala, awa wansawabuila vikoro, eh? Nena segnalintwenchi samu. One kuena, dade. Two kuena, ma. Three kuena. Four kuwe. Those are the four hands. Unale batwa tu buwa kamo. Onawke tlu tahu loku. Rakopa, blidule ma nikawalatela na halo. Kadino more, rising kadili. One, two, three, four. Then sasame nizalo kadino more, rising kadili. And then omu abuwé, akreta omu abuweli. Omye pez gomu. Omundu pez gomu.
Hey, ikikareho na. Ikikareho na, bade shono na, ikikai. Seprayi. Kuena, one. Two, two, three, four. Joal. Erici rukwu. Kumela mboshi. Libitwaka kaki pito waharamozi. Kimongodi wa di buka. Ibele ame filmmaker. Potoa ki kiena na na ebu anitabe nyawo refman salawo. Mushomo nitala beki filele na nele itse ngapa broadcasting itse mossebitwaka. Ebe, story siena ke pateto wa sofo. Mbaki fumanor eswapala lemonsele shumi. Ebe, hake patalu. So kineke kopa ore, lehotla. Kapantla lo hotla kaka karinso. Kanete ke potla kereutwisi mubana kanete redalemala. Ibele refalo kema tala letsepe ore. Mesebitzia roona ekare, haena buli. Bobuka, olatala mesebitzimi, kialabo.
Kumela libitwaka kina sibongilo khmalo, keshla niaka lungelen rich. Aki songwriter, musician and makeup artist. So, okay. So, gutlen dade abua leka kontraka elongo reyetaha. And then jolo kaki lemutu ai binang, kikhona witapela di pinataka. And then lo kaki performer, be gutla batwa bamasa ba binati pinataka. Hapu olavalan tshweyetahala inkila ya go di auditioning Frustate Gospel Choir. And then beki, beki wina di auditionini. Only to find out to hori, bado ba jouen, ki bana bilimba khona hori, ba performi. Iseli bana ba binelan Frustate Gospel Choir. So nege kupa obota ba ehu, ehuwa joan. Thank you.
Your work is still happening so we are seeing even in that space the issue of royalty sharing should also take in there. So that you ensure you reap the benefits for your work and also the people that will be in that particular way being the performers themselves. They must also part of that royalty sharing so that as we see the work being performed, they are also reaping the benefits for the royalties that will be produced in that time. Without necessarily having to die very poor because we've seen lots of artists, they die very poor and we have to assist especially performers in this regard to come in and assist them financially. So in this sense, we'll ensure that you do have a steady income as you are creative in this particular in this particular space. And whenever the work that you've been involved in is being produced. Also they build, they push for especially the performers to operate within a space that's very formalized. That it encourages performers to actually formalize themselves through structures. So that those structures can actually be recognized by the relevant authorities. You were saying that during COVID, it was hard to assist people that are within this space because of lack of formalization and being organized within the creative space. So it's very important that with these spaces, as we go forward, that we encourage the industry to actually ensure that they are formalized and organized within their space. So that they can also reap the benefits where it's necessary and also to ensure that they operate within a space that is organized for their own good as well. And also to reap the benefits that are there. So with these particular things, we are trying to ensure that we promote science, we promote innovation. And we ensure that as creatives, we are protected within your own rights so that you can reap the benefits of your works going forward. So the bills currently before legislature have alluded to and they are here for you to make input on them. So that we ensure that where we have to tweak or where we have to consider other issues, they can be considered before the bills are actually passed into law. You'll understand that the journey has been long because of the competing interests within the industry and also the challenges we've been facing. So I would urge you, please do make your input so we can consider it before the president can sign off the bill. Other issues of the bill in terms of how we're going to do some of the issues that have alluded to today. It will be explained extensively when we do the regulations going forward once the bills have been passed into law. And we'll also during that time, we'll go out as well and come to the communities and also the affected persons. To present those regulations so that you can still make input as they will talk to issues that will concern you like the rates I've talked about. The contracts, how they look and also how we'll go about creating the connecting societies. Chairperson, I think I will end there for today and I'll take input from the floor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Pusiso. Reka, rekabua. And then ask questions and input. I forgot to explain. How so? Unale, but what translator? So if you need them, just raise your hand, then you'll be assisted. Please. So we can have you raising your hands. I'm going to start here. And then take hands and then I'll go to this side after. Anyone who wants to speak, you raise your hands. You have made your point. But section 12 must be reviewed with immediate effect until research has been conducted. You have unequivocally expressed that view. Because I heard Ushbu Naga President is careful around that issue as well. Because you've made your point and I'm sure members of parliament as well are conversant with what you are raising. But thank you very much though. I'm not sure if you want to speak, you would indicate. But I was seeing a hand one. One, two, three. Just that I don't have time to write your names down. But I'm just going to allocate numbers to you and please accept that number. So can you raise your hands? Those are the four hands. One, two, three, four. And then omu abue. Omundu pescomo.
Tumelambusha. Eh, potoa ki kina na ebu anutabe nyawo refman salaw. Storiesena ke pateto wa sofo. Mpa gifumanor eswapa le monsere shumi. Ebeha ke patale. So kineke kopa ore. Eh, le hotla. Kapantla lo hotla kaka karre. So kane teke potla ke rudhuisi moba na kane teke alemaala. Ibele refaloa ke matla letsepe ore. Mesibitzi aruna ekare. Ha ina buli. Boboka olatelame sibitzi mi. Kialabo.
Eh, tumelang. Libisolaka kina sibongilo khmalo. Ke chlaniaka lung elen rich. Eh, ki songwriter, musician and makeup artist. So. Okay. So eh, gutlen dati abua leka kontarak elo oreya itahana. And then jolo ka kila mutu ai binan. Ki ohona wita pele itipinataka. And then lo ka ki performer. Be gutla ba thwaba mbasa ba binati pinataka. Eh, hapu olavalin tshwe itahala in kilaya ko du auditioning Free State Gospel Choir. And then beki, beki wina du auditioning ne. Only to find out to hori. Ba juva juwe. Ki bona bilim ba ohona hori. Ba performi. Iseli bona ba binela Free State Gospel Choir. So negi kupa obota ba yo i tuajwa. Thank you.
Eh, kialabo. Motama iswadi puisano. Eh, natalibizoke na marapi di ma fandiri. Eh, ki omu adi activist. Eh, mare. Also ki public participation officer in much of a local municipality. Eh. Ki, ki ratapile, ki, ki rukue te. Ibele ke lebuwe. Eh. Mkuena na ya, ya legislature. Ka ore i expand the public participation. Hori ba tumeloring background tu ki bona ba uklan. Eh, mojoko. Ba o exploit uwa. Eh, ki bona ba uklan mojoko. Eh, ba rehoke tuwe. Talented sabo. Or ba teba nje karolo. Or ba teba peise. Eh, ha holo. Tokomanin te na tepe di te na. Eh, ibile kapisisa. Ki, ki lebuemo presidenta wana. Ka hori. Half mana tokomanin te na na wila bona ore. Di tshwane ti di ku kalemura. Obani disabui. Le, the aspirations sa di artist. Kapa bimbamu sibiti. Eh, motama isi. Kineke kopa ki kale tokomanin ena na. Eh, eri buanka ya copyright amendment B. Kine, ngatswa yela hori. Ho yakap presentation iin tshwe mona na ki DTI. Eh, la ki batile ki fikla. Eh, kamera ona. Kamara ona. Kamari. Moki moku kuli. Hala lusa tabena ya tokomanin. Wa bonza hori. Eh, rona reli di artist on the crowd. Unale ba tubana ba mona na baribo raminyela. Ba ufuma na ngore. Ba pusha hori tokomanin ena na. Oyo onamo na ibenele tshwene mona renke feius. And. Tshwene e ba bakangwi yesa. Ha ekor, ha ekor rebenefiter ona reli di artist. Mpa ekobenefiter bona. La harre elele tshore. Ba bebe ba sebedisa. Babang ba di artist. Hori. Ebe bona ba. Ba pusha tshwene ya feius. So that bill. Re kaye ana ne. Ha feela isaki niyakarule ena eri feius. Then karule ya bobeidi. Eh, ki kapantshene ki bata outswala ka yo na ya bobeidi. Ki tabaina ya di contract. Eh. Unale mono. One ore. Tabaya di contract. Ibe wema tuho a official minister kapaa ya minister. Eli ministera kabuye. Joali. Eh, nen karata obonsa hori. Reka, rekesi tumelanilio. Obani honka bo emo bojalo ba di contract. Obonsa hori ekare rona. Eh, bo emo barona reli sector kapaa reli di artist. Ha reho ni eh, ujitama ika. Kati la i, ine pahe ti. Obani kete lo nyadi kete lu. Okofuma na hori. Di contracti te nu. Ha di kanedi determined from official minister. Reteri bona leka metutuha ona joali. Na konya ona joali. Eh. The very same politicians. Eh, ki bona ba tusha ori exploit uwe. So ha ise ba bona ba kamileba determinedi di contracti taro. I, 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 ibana lebutata. Ki bona ba ohana u determine na hori. Eh, ha hulu. Ki etamalala ka space isena rasululosa na sa, sa free state. Ki kweza malala ka event erdi la kana ya makufi. Makufi ki provincial event. Mare. Unalu hori hu kiswe di international artist. Di politiche ebe batsona te determine na hori. The very same international artist ba fuemili.